And as always, join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So there is a couple items. Our administrative assistant is on vacation, will be recording the meeting for a minute. Commissioner Robertson has that covered. Under additions, we have non-disturbance agreement for Airport Solar that we'll add throughout. Just it's not timed. And then 9:30, we have Lori Hutchinson with Airport Solar update. So that's a timed item at 9:30. Other than that, I have no additions or deletions at this time. Do you have anything more for me? All right, with that, we'll... Yes, sir.
I see I'm listed on here for an MOU. I don't know where that came from, so that can be deleted.
The MOU...
I have two YGA's, I don't have an MOU.
Okay. Melanie, I have her leave that on there because she is working on an MOU that hasn't come forward yet. So we'll delete that off there. Jacob Beer, MOU. And we'll take that off of the meeting for tomorrow also as an action item. Any other corrections? Thank you. So our first item is AlertSense. Mr. Tag, our new guys, Brendan, look after you. You get fired up.
Just about there.
Okay, well, let Daniel give a bit of an overview and you'll be fired up and ready to go.
Good morning, Marc. So basically, we've been talking mass notification system like sometime two or three years now. There's several different companies out there. AlertSense is our closest company, they're based out of Idaho.
Credit or wrong.
That's true. So, and basically, they're going to talk about everything AlertSense does and everything Mass Notification System does, especially their system. There's a couple different components. They're going to talk about the iPOS, which is a system used with the Weather Service, and they'll be more into it. And also, it works as an internal notification system, as well as cell towers, all sorts of stuff. So it's a whole bunch of things. The big thing for us is where we use it a lot is in our fire evacuations. Anytime we need to evacuate an area, we draw a little map just for evacuations. So really, I can take this into the presentation and answer questions on the left.
Okay. Your presentation, I have a 9:30, is a little faster than that, or...
I can, I can get within that window.
Okay, and if it builds along, I know the lady that's next will just delay that person for a little part. If we run over...
I apologize if we go over there.
I'm fine.
Okay, let me just go ahead and conclude up here. Now, as Daniel was saying, the, you kind of mentioned a couple scenarios. Specifically, we run wildfires around the West. We're always trying to find better ways to alert the public, and I apologize for the monitor here. So what are tools allow you to do? Some common ways of alerting sirens. Actually, do you have sirens in this valley by chance, in case what...
We do, they're out there.
Okay, yeah.
They need clutches, but we still go out.
It's a common, a common story. So obviously, you know, there's, in terms of the sirens, kind of some of the issues you could have is really reaching people if you're indoors, if you're just maybe a little bit on the periphery, if they're not working. What, what we're going to be kind of demonstrating today is the ability, in a couple of different ways, to alert your public effectively, but also being able to maintain internal communication, what we call intra-agency communications. Not everything's an emergency, not everything's a wildfire. Fire departments help me to staff, sheriff departments and so on. Being able to send off a poll, a search and rescue, or a search team, or volunteer teams, and get that information back on a mobile application is, it can be a very, very powerful tool in terms of first response. And I believe we are logged in. Everyone hold across your fingers. Let's see if this comes up on TV screens here. There, beautiful. I can, I'll zoom in a little bit. So to keep the, the timing moving along here, on the 30 minutes, there, I mentioned a couple of different ways of...
You're fine if Brendan...
Okay. There are a couple of different ways of alerting the public, and then we have a couple of different ways of internal communications. Now, so if you're a dispatcher and there's a wildfire situation, flooding, hazmat, that type of deal, you're going to, you have a couple of ways of doing that to the public. Now, if you see on the left, and I understand it's kind of small font, I might be able to get this a little bit bigger here. That might help. So in the, the left-hand side is our, is our navigation panel, right? So this is where all the action takes place. On the top left-hand, you're going to see Send Internal Alert, that's your internal communications. Send Public, that is what we call, or what the industry calls reverse 911. So if you've ever had to sign up on a website to give them your cellphone number, email, so when there is an incident that affects your home, your business, wherever you're registered, we send out if your, you know, if your county sends out a notification, you are going to get notified on a cellular device, email, text, voice call, however they decide to send that out. And then there's iPOS. iPOS is the Integrated Public Alert and Warning System. This is a FEMA-sponsored program. Okay, this is a very powerful tool. So as an example, if you or, you know, we, we come across this industry, counties do sheriff's departments, where they, they go out on a pancake breakfast and say, hey, case of emergency, can you go ahead and give us your information? Just go online, give us some basic info. And a lot of them might not be on board with that 100%. They, they think that you're going to get sent text messages all the time for closure, road closures and things like that. Well, with iPOS, you don't need public signup. And you'll see this briefly here. When I, when I circle an area, and specifically wildfire would qualify for this, if you are anywhere in that area, I will reach every single cellular device within that targeted area. If I've got a truck driver coming through out of Idaho, and they come into an active region that you selected on there, they're going to get pained as soon as they cross that threshold. It is a very powerful tool. It's the same tool that you've all been woken up with at 2:00 AM before with an Amber Alert. So that is what, that is the kind of interface that I'm going to go ahead and dive into here in a bit. So now, in terms of the administrators, and I won't go too deep into this, but, you know, having the ability to manage contacts, so, you know, say, you know, Daniel's an administrator. Logging in here. You'll have a full, basically, digital rolodex of all of your contacts. All of your county employees, first responders, volunteers, human resources, it doesn't really matter. Anybody under that county umbrella, you'll have their information in here. And then this allows you also to group things out, group, put them in groups. So if I've got a group, the commissioners, that is a group, sheriff's department, search and rescue, these are all different groups. So if I have a message internally I need to send out to them, I can just select the group, send out the message, and it's out. I don't have to worry about selecting them individually and so on. And then we would walk more through that on the individual training side of things. So let's kind of go ahead and dive right into the alerting. I'm going to kind of go through just level of severity. So we can start off with an internal alert. So maybe I just have to dispatch some people out, and, or I need to be able just to get some information out to a, to, to my team, right? It might be search and rescue as an example. So something to keep in mind here is that if you are, whether you are dispatched, looking at this, sending internal or public notification, the form here that you see is going to be identical to the public form. Because you want to make sure that nine times out of 10, you know, if you're, if you're sending off internal alerts, that when you move over to public, there's not that, oh no, how do I do this kind of a moment? So this was built for ease of use, and it was built for speed. This is a single form, it's a top-down process. You fill the information out and get it out. I want to make sure that, that, you know, timing is, it's kind of everything with these. And I'll go through this fairly quickly here. So the first, the first area you see are templates. So with templates, if I'm the fire department, and let's say I've got a structure fire template built up, I can just select structure fire, it will load all my information, the people who need to be reached, maybe some of the messaging to start off with. I just change a couple of the details and I send this off, and it can be out in under 15 seconds. Now, for this, for this demonstration, I'm going to go ahead and just kind of walk you through this manually. I'll go through fairly quickly. Let me just kind of back this up, I'll leave that there. I'll leave this, I'll go through this fairly quickly, and I'll come back and show just a couple of other features. So the basic information, when you log in, everything loads for you. Really, the only thing you're going to change is the alert. What are we dealing with here? So maybe we've got a missing person. I'm going to go ahead and put that in. Our subject now is missing person, so when this goes out, we know what we're dealing with. And again, this is just for internal, this is just to my agencies, and my first responders, volunteers and so on. Now I need to come down to build my message. What do we want to say here? So I'm just going to, I'll, I'll type up a, a brief summary here. Missing person reported. Okay, we'll keep it, keep it pretty simple. And yes, this does have spell check for people like me. So, missing person reported, please stand by for further instructions. You have up to 1,500 characters. I would obviously recommend staying below a few hundred. You don't want to lose people in a novel. But, so we've gone ahead and built on our message. What do we want to send this to? What devices do we want to send this to? So I'm going to come down here, just to my, my delivery method. This was an emergency. I can just select check all, it'll send everything from an email, mobile app, all the way down to a fax machine. In this instance, I'm just going to go ahead and, I'll go ahead and send this to myself. Typically, I'll send it to somebody here in the room, but I think it might be quicker if we just... Jack, are you in there? Okay, great, I'll send this off to you right here. So I'm just going to go ahead and select, send a text message here to the mobile phone. Just going to check that box. And come on down here, and what groups would I send this out to? So if we're dealing with a missing person, you know, again, search and rescue, we might do an urban search. Get out there, start knocking on doors, that kind of a thing. I've already got my group built out. I'll go ahead and deselect that. And let me see if I can find Jack in here real quick. I'm going to go ahead and, yep, I got Jack here. So I'm going to go and send this off to Jack, and at the very bottom, I'm going to hit submit. I'm going to get this out. Now it's going to ask me, are you sure you want to do this? Yeah, I'm sure I want to do this. So let's see how cell signals are doing in this building here, so. No, that's that one. That was myself here too, so.
There we go.
Got it? Okay.
Brendan Longley, missing person reported, please stand by for further instructions.
Okay. So as you can see on the screen, so whether you're emergency management, you know, dispatch, or whoever has the ability to send off on this, you're going to know pretty quick if this was a success or not. If there was a failure, who knows? You might, some of the information, we might have one digit off in the cellphone number. It might be a cell tower down to a fire, something along those lines. But you can see here that you're going to know it's, this was a success. Maybe I sent this off to 30 people, and it went to 29, but there was one person kind of struggling. I just want to double-check and make sure that it did go to everybody. So the bottom there is just the status report. I'm just going to go ahead and open that up, and it's going to give me a receipt of everything. And it's, it's actually a good point to mention this. Every, every notification, every communication that is sent out of this system or that is received by anybody is permanently stamped in this. So if there's a court order, a judge, you know, a judge needs all communication associated with a specific event, it will be in here, you can export it, email it off, and you're in here off and running. So it'll never go anywhere. You can see here too, that just provides a lot more detail in terms of your date and timestamps. What was the device this was sent off on, you know, what was the messaging? And if this was a success. And I know it's hard for you guys to see, but here it was sent successfully, date and timestamped right here. So if someone says, I didn't get this, well, yeah, you did. Go ahead and check again at this exact time on your, on your cellphone there, so. Now, maybe the missing person has been found, and I need to notify everybody again that I just sent this off to. But I don't want to build this out again. I just want to change up some of the messaging and get it back out. So what I'm going to do at this point is the very top here, I'm just going to come to my alert history up here. I can always access my alert history here on the left-hand side as well. But since I'm already in the form, I'll just go in cheat and use this one. Now, in the alert history, it's, it is chronological. It's always the most recent one is at the top. And now I can go ahead and just hit resend on this message. And what it's going to do is it's going to pull up what we just did. I don't have to, I don't have to build out anything, it's just going to populate everything we just put in here. So our missing person message is still in there, the, the subject, I should say. And again, all I want to do is change up the messaging a little bit. So what I'm going to say is, missing person has been located. We'll say, please stand down. All right. And I don't have to touch anything else if I don't want. I am going to change up the delivery mode. I'm just going to go and switch this up to a phone call. And what this is going to do now is it's going to send text to speech. So it's going to translate that, and we're going to send this over to voice calls. So I don't have to select the, the groups, or the people, or anything. I'm going to hit submit, and we're going to get this out. Jack, can we get this, could you put this on speakerphone for me? Take it off mute. Is that allowed?
Missing person has been located. Please stand down. To confirm this message, press 1. To repeat, press 2. Thank you for your response.
Your voice has changed.
Yeah, the coffee hasn't kicked in yet, so. So again, you know, if I want to kind of review this a bit, I want to see where this is landing, who's responding, how long people, you know, have taken to, to pick up the phone. I can just come back into my report here, review this again, make sure we're, things are buttoned up the way they need to be. And again, I know it's hard to, to look, but Jack pressed 1, it took him 12 seconds to do it at 8:06, 10:16 AM. So again, it's just a way to get information out quick, effectively. And again, this is for internal communications. And I'm going to go ahead and show you a few other, just, just really quickly here, some other, some other features you can take advantage of, specifically even on internal here. Polling is a big one. I, on search and rescue, I don't know if you deal the same with here, if you're dealing with volunteers, we have about 50, a little over 50 teammates on our search team. However, it's always the same 10 or 15 that show up. So we send out a poll, I'm out in the field, I'll be, I'll be first on scene, and I'll have to send off a notification. I want to know who can show up. I've got a missing hiker up in the mountains, who can show up? How fast can you be here? You know, can you, or not show up, and that, and that kind of a deal. So if I come down here to the build a message area, there's a little, a little title here that says, create a poll. I can just go ahead and select that. I'll have up to five responses that I can put in here, most will do three. I'm going to show you this in the mobile application real quick, but here, I wanted to show you where you would build that out. So you would type in your question here. We've got a missing hiker at Henry's Fort Canyon, can you show up? And in the answers, option 1, 2, or 3, I'll put, yes, ETA 30 minutes. Option 2 will be, yes, ETA, you know, 60 minutes, and then option 3, unavailable to respond. Now, I don't have to have the mobile application downloaded. And as a matter of fact, we would outfit your entire county employee, all your employees and volunteers with that, that mobile application, but they don't have to have that downloaded. They can respond via text, email, if they get a phone call, they can press 1, 2, or 3. And all of that information comes back to a dashboard. And if I'm out in the field, or, you know, or Daniel's out in the field, I can get all of that back in one viewable portal. I know who's coming, who's not, who hasn't showed up, and so on and so forth. Same thing works with evacuation, building evacuations. I need a safety poll. Are you, have you evacuated and safe? Are you evacuated injured? And then, you know, unresponsive, that kind of a deal. There are a lot of use cases for that. And I'll go ahead and show you that in the mobile application. Again, there are a few other, you know, features that you can take advantage of in here. Attaching documentation, recording your own voice. If you don't want that text to speech, you can record your voice. You can still read the text on, on your phone, on SMS or email, but you'll hear your voice that, that's been recorded. And then if you have any other details that you want to share, photographs, maybe you've got a suspicious character walking around a school or hospital, and you want to share that with not just sheriff's department, but maybe anybody who's in that area, teachers, principals, whoever, whoever might be there, you need to keep an eye out for that. If I attach additional content here, just like in an email, I can come in here, I can load in a photograph, I can put in height, weight, eye color, if I've got a stolen vehicle. This is a small community like the one I live in, and, you know, it's in small communities, you've got an advantage if you send off something like this to your people, because you can spot someone pretty quick. Now, let me go ahead and dive into the, the public side of things. And in iPOS here, I think we're, we're doing okay, we've got maybe 10 or 15. Any questions on kind of the internal side of things? Again, this is just, this is just kind of communicating among your, your people. Does it seem fairly straightforward? Any, any questions, kind of immediate questions popping out right now?
So what about around here, we don't have very good cell service? So do you send it from landlines also at the same time, or...
Yep. So what we do in terms of the public, and we'll go over there now, matter of fact, I'll switch on this. I'm going to show you the fact of that. That's a good question, because that's, that's one of the things that, that you deal with. So on the, the public side of things, if you see here, there are a couple of ways you're going to reach them, right? So it is cellular devices, if they've given you your email, cellphone, great, you can do that. We also provide the community with a free mobile application. They can receive it that way, or landlines, right? So now, you know, in areas that there is difficult cell, cell coverage, people pay attention a little bit more to those landlines, even though we're all getting bombarded by, you know, robocalls and all this other stuff, you tend to focus on that still a little bit. So here, in the public alerting, I said it was virtually identical to the internal. So those who are sending this off, they're comfortable with it already. There are a couple of other things you do need to check here, though. I need to tell the system I'm going to send this to voice calls, my geo-targeted residents. Geo-targeted residents are my 911 data, white and yellow page information. Any landline or any cellphone information that you have on your county, we can, we can roll that in here. And then the subscribers. We will go ahead and provide you with a landing page for your county website, fire department, sheriffs, it doesn't matter. We can actually put that link in there, so the public can sign up for emergency alerts. They can put their basic information in to receive whatever they want. Something from the National Weather Service, what weather events do they want? And then just basic contact info, home address, email, cellphone, done. And then social media. You guys have a Facebook account, Sheriff's Department, or the county, or Twitter, anything like that, that the, the community follows?
I don't blame you.
No, that's, that's fine. No, no, that's fine.
If you ever did have one, though, we can easily let you do it.
Yeah, you know, it's, and when it comes to emergencies, it really doesn't matter how you get that message out. You want as many bullhorns as possible. So people who are, you know, following Facebook or Twitter, those accounts, we could go ahead and use those in as well. So we selected who we want to send this off to. Now we got to open this thing up, and we're not going to select people, we're actually just going to draw the area that's affected. So I'm going to go ahead and pull up here, this is a, this is a mapping tool that dispatch is going to have access to, or whoever, any administrator is going to have access to here. Pending my internet connection here, so can you break for a second here?
So generally, this tool is used through the dispatch center, and then other people, can we administrators and use it also?
Yeah, so we have, you know, whether it's emergency managers, you know, again, anybody who would be considered to be an administrator would have access to the tool. And it's all permission-based, so whoever you feel should have access to sending the notification out, they would have the permissions to do that. And, looks like my wifi is a little stronger here. So what we use is, and if it, and if it boots up here, is Azure Mapping Tool. This allows you to draw a polygon of the affected area, and whether it's an active shooter situation, wildfire, road closure, you've got something else that the community needs to know about. Again, not everything has to be an emergency. Okay, guys, I'm having a, I'm having a, there's some sort of firewall that's blocking this off, so I apologize for that part, portion of the demonstration. But that tool right there... Oh, is that, is it pulling up on yours? Okay. Here, let's try this really quick.
Let me grab your mouse.
All right.
It's good to have back.
Yes, back up. All right, as a bear with me too, this is, this is an apple, so.
These crazy guys are... Oh, he's something decent.
Yeah.
I'm bilingual.
I'll brush his neck.
So as an example here, so how do you zoom in with your mouse?
Double click.
Oh, it's on the, on the pad itself, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So that's eastern Idaho, you know, showing you. Yeah, use two fingers, all right, there we go.
Okay, so here's an example of, you know, cluster of our, of county's clients and so on. They all want to be treated as one district, and we have that, maybe specifically in some more rural counties, because they all share a lot of their, their emergency services. And, and then zooming in here.
Does it show where Jack's health and spot is?
No.
I don't know if he'd give that up.
That's hell, but no Tell'em Hill.
Marc, you don't know Jack.
Paul's idea is not listening to that. Is this, I missed the first one, sorry. Probably looking at purchasing this, is that what you're doing?
This is the first presentation, Daniel's bringing it forward. There's a process we'd have to look at and everything.
Right.
Something to consider.
This is almost identical to what the ESD purchases for the school districts in the, in the county. We call, it's called School Messenger. And they can do all of this similar type of stuff, not to the level of an Amber, Amber Alert, but we have everybody that's a, that has a phone number, email address, text message, anything like that, hooked up anyway, connected to the schools. We have different groups, have those, all those kinds of things. And it's a godsend, because you know how it is in an emergency, I mean, all the cell lines are immediately, you know, taken up because everybody's calling everybody, and we can send out a message, and we can get every single parent, you know, that has a kid in school, within, within minutes, two or three minutes. And we save ourselves so many hassles by doing that.
Yep, and DOC out here has a system also, I don't know.
I think they're using this system, don't they? Don't they use AlertSense?
A lot of work in county.
A lot of work, yeah.
Is it the Warner Corrections, one of them?
In this county specifically, I'd have to double-check on that one.
I thought it was the state.
Oh, the state, yeah.
DOC.
Yeah.
The Warner Creek Correction Facility.
Okay. So also, so...
That's Idaho Falls.
It's Idaho Falls, yeah. So, you know, let's say if we have an area of, maybe particularly out here, we've got a wildfire, brush fires, that might, we have to kind of notify the, the kind of the surrounding areas of the town.
And just to be clear, the reason we're showing you Idaho Falls is because our COG, our demo COG, is for the state of Idaho. So, you know, your COG covers your area, and you can't go outside your COG, so you can't send an alert in Chicago, you know, from here.
So I've got my drawings, I know it's hard to, hard to see here, but we have different drawing tools that you can select, right? Circles, polygons, whatever's going to allow you to, to effectively isolate a specific area that's affected. So I might go with a freehand polygon here. We'll just, you know, call this a wildfire, and I'll leave this as area 1. And then I'm going to create my area. And then what I'm going to do is I'm just going to take my mouse here. God willing. And just draw that area that might be affected, that I may need to notify here. I'll probably do a lot larger than that, but limited, limited real estate up here. But now what we've done is we've just selected everybody who, whether it was landlines that are affected, that are in that area, or cellphone devices that are registered in that area, they will be notified, as well as email if they have publicly opted in. Now, on the left-hand side here, you can... Now, on the left-hand side here, you can see, we don't just tell you that you're going to reach almost 1,200 people. And it's hard to see, but it's 1,155 landlines, and then we've got 72 people who have signed up. So we want to tell you, you know, who you're reaching, basically the device type that you're reaching. We don't want to just tell you that you're getting this massive number, and then you're going to say, well, why didn't people respond? Well, maybe 90% of it was landlines in some areas. So we want to be able to break that out a bit more. You know, again, if there's, whatever it is, if it's active shooters, a river coming through town, floods, you know, missing person, you know, this tool can be used for a multitude of things, in terms of reaching the public. Now, I'm going to go ahead and submit this. This is my area here that we carved out. And I'm going to go back to... Now that we've got our area carved out, I'm not going to go through all this because it's identical to what we just did with the internal side of things. But as I was mentioning before, anything that I type up in the message will automatically transfer to, you know, Facebook or Twitter, and we can tie those social media platforms in, we can do that. And then, this field also simultaneously allows you to not just reach the public, but now I can start looping in groups, right? So I want to make sure that the message I'm sharing with the public, I'm also sharing that with fire department, that I'm sharing with individuals, so you can all be on the same page in terms of that message. And then, those who have the ability to send out to the public, they will be provided with an authorization code, because you don't want someone having a bad day to send something out to the public. So those who have that ability, who are authorized to send out to the public, will be provided that code there, so. Again, it's pretty straightforward in terms of the process. Again, it's a handful of steps, top-down process, and just get it, get it out. And again, templates there as well, to speed up the process. If you've got wildfire templates, or anything like that, active shooter templates, it'll load all the groups, it might, it'll load SWAT, Sheriff's Department, whoever you want involved, change that messaging up, and get it out. So I wanted to make sure that the timing is everything. Let me briefly go into iPaws, I think that's going to be the most important, one of the most important for you, specifically as it pertains to wildfires. There is a little bit of a process from a paperwork standpoint, which it's not necessarily a cumbersome process. It's just, once you fill it out and send it off to the state, state sends it up to FEMA, and FEMA gets you a certificate maybe six to eight weeks later. And then, once you get that, we can have you up and running on iPaws within 24 to 48 hours, because it's a pretty quick process, so. So let me just go ahead and show you real quick. I'm going to go ahead and open up an iPaws, I'm going to go send an iPaws alert here. And let's just use wildfire as that example, because it's all fresh on our minds. So I'm going to go ahead and log in here. And I'm going to go ahead and select Create a Public Message. We've got a wildfire, we've got to notify a lot of people. So the process is going to be the same, let me zoom in for everybody here. And maybe back up, do you, in this community, do you feel like you have a, maybe, a decent-sized Spanish-speaking community, I'd say? And maybe what percentage do you think of your county could take a wild guess?
25%.
25%, okay, okay, so that is significant. So...
Daniel, what do you think?
I'd say at least 20%.
20, 25, okay. So one of the things about iPaws and AlertSense is that we're very proud of this fact. We're the first and we're the only iPaws provider that allows you to send off an emergency message, so EAS, that's your TV and radio, we've all seen that ticker coming across the TV, and also wireless emergency for cellular devices, in both English and in Spanish. So for those, you know, the state of Washington is an example. They passed legislation that if you are over a certain percent of Spanish-speaking, or if you have X amount of number, whichever threshold you hit, you are required to have a multilingual in terms of Spanish. And more and more states are starting to recognize that. At the end of the day, it's just bodies, you've got to get bodies out of there. And it's in everyone's best interest, so. So starting off with iPaws, I'll go through this fairly quickly. You don't have to have templates loaded, but I've got it. So I'm going to go ahead and load my wildfire evacuation template. It's going to load this for me now below here. You are going to be provided with two COG certificates from FEMA, okay? One of them is a live COG, that's when it's a live situation. The other one is going to be a test COG. Now, if this is live, you're going to see, real quick, I'm going to recognize pretty quickly that I'm on a live system.
And the reason is, this is the most powerful, you could send a message to everybody in your entire county in five seconds.
Yeah, and the average, the average is a little over two seconds to reach cellular devices. So you're not dealing with bandwidth issues, anything along those lines, like you would potentially with the other public alerting side of things. This is virtually instant, when that goes out. You'll see...
And there's no undo button.
There's a cancel, but no undo. There's a, whoops, I didn't mean this. So EAS is your TV and radio. If I don't want to send that, I can just unselect that, and then leave wireless, and just send this off to cellular devices. I'm going to leave both of them. I am going to go ahead and tell FEMA, what are we dealing with here? So I'm going to set my settings, this is a fire warning, we are evacuated now, and I'm going to set this for 24 hours. So anybody who comes into this zone that I draw out, like I said, someone come out of town, truck driver, whatever it might be, that region is now going to be live for 24 hours. So anybody new to that area is going to be pinged within that area. Now, we want to build out our message. On the right-hand side here, you can see what it would look like. As you're typing it up, you want to know, like, is the spacing correct? Does it look jumbled? Does it, you know, does it look clean and crisp on the TV screen? So I will go ahead and just build out my message. The headline here is a wildfire warning, the event description, recommended next instructions. And then this messaging, again, is text-to-speech, but again, we're one of the few that allow you to record your voice. So if you don't want that computer sound, you can actually record your voice on this. And then you can also preview here how to sound, or again, you can record your voice and drop it in there and hit play, you can listen to how that's going to sound as well. So we've got our messaging for our TV and radio broadcasters, and now we've got to put something on some cellphones. So up to this point, you've only had 90 characters, so you're basically just ringing the doorbell. You're telling them, we've got wildfire in, you know, blank part of your county, right? If you send this off to your entire county, you might get a lot of people warned that don't need to be necessarily aware of this, so. Now, one of the great enhancements that's coming up and will be officially effective, I believe, at the end of September, FEMA and the carriers get on board quickly, is that you now have up to 360 characters to send off to wireless devices, okay? As of right now, the only thing that is mandatory is the 90-character, and then if you want, you can go ahead and do the 360. The reason why 90 is mandatory is because all devices can receive 90 characters. Not all devices can accept a 360-character limit with a wireless emergency alert. So it's imperative that you keep it 90 there, and if you want, you can go 360. Now, if I go ahead and just send this off right now to my county here, this is going to go out to the entire county. I don't necessarily want to do that, so I want to carve out a specific area. So I'm just going to go ahead and open this up. And let's say that we've got a wildfire out here in this area. Kind of looks a little watched out for you there, but we need to notify the city of Boise, okay? So I've got a polygon I can draw, or I can draw a circle. I'm going to leave it as a polygon. And now I'm just going to go set up my fence. This is the zone that's going to be affected. I need to alert everybody here. I need to make sure we get the Boise Airport included there, Idaho Penitentiary, and so on. So now, this is my active zone. Anybody in this area, their devices are going to go off when I initiate this. If I leave this zone and I come back into it while it's still active, the system's going to recognize that, and it's not going to ping my phone again, okay? But if I am new to that area, again, a driver coming across this threshold right here, my device will go off as soon as I cross that. So I'm going to go ahead and save that shape. And now we have what we want to send, we know where we want to send it. And if you see here in the bottom, it says Send Test Alert. If this was live, it would be red and say, you sent live alert. And then, you're going to see, are you sure you want to do this? So I have to go ahead and type in verbatim, capital T-E-S-T, and send this out. Now, AlertSense provides 24/7/365 support out of the Pacific Northwest. So if you have an issue at 2:00 AM, you will get somebody on call at 2:00 AM. You will not have somebody from out of the area responding to this. So if this is an iPaws situation, if there is an issue, the first thing you call, this would be for anybody who is certified to use this, they would not call FEMA. The first phone call they would make is to us. Because if you call FEMA, the first phone call they're going to call is us, so. Because we can see in the back end what's going on. Because we had, you know, Snohomish County up in Washington years ago, the EM sent off a wireless emergency alert for mudslides, and the slides took out a lot of their cell towers. And so we called this up, and we could see that we have towers down in the region, so. And we can help expedite that much quicker, so. So that is iPaws, and I could touch briefly here on the mobile app, which would take two seconds. But any questions on iPaws? Again, the iPaws side of the question is very powerful. Oh, go ahead.
Can I ask you that?
Sure.
So when you mentioned COG, does that mean strictly county-wide here? I mean, would that be our COG?
Your COG would be your county.
So is there the capability, because, like, at school shootings, say, for instance, is there a way to have one of your groups be Altus, Klammer, that it goes out to them, because they're all so close? I mean, somebody could easily hit that area really quick.
Yeah, so if, let's say you're in one of those areas?
Well, say I'm here, and I'm saying on alert, but the school shooter took off, and he's heading towards Altus. Is there a way to hit their police department or connect with, that's kind of outside of the county?
Yeah, absolutely. So how you would do that is, when we went back here for the, so, and the internal alerting, basically what you would be able to do is, you can include all of them in your contact list, in your group. So, you know, they would be their own group. You can send it off to them internally, they can get all the information they need pretty quick. So just because they're outside of your county doesn't mean you can't communicate with them. From an iPaws standpoint, when you are physically sending that message out, that does have to reside within your county.
Your geofenced.
Your geofenced area, yeah, that's a regulatory thing with FEMA.
So if the next county over gets your internal alert, then they can create their own iPaws alert very easily, they just kind of erase the text.
As a matter of fact, too, I know this talk doesn't mean a ton, but it's also, this dropdown here says Create COG-to-COG. So if your county next to you has their own iPaws system, COG, you can send off your exact message to them, and they can basically just have reset to their whole area. Or to wherever they decide to go to. But they don't have to build it out, you can just push out what you have created, so. Let me just, real quick here, if it's permitted, I want to, I think it's important to see the mobile application here, that would be provided to everybody internally. Again, volunteers, everyone. This will take about two minutes here, so I appreciate everyone's patience. And go ahead and make sure this doesn't keep going dark on us. So, right here, you can see my phone here. So this is, this works for both Android and iPhone. Windows will no longer be supported by Microsoft. They're the mobile devices, I believe, at the end of this year, so. Anybody has a Windows phone, might be a good time to start kind of browsing. But right here is, so the red mobile application, the alert, is My Alerts, that's provided to the community, they can track weather notifications through that, through the National Weather Service, they can get their emergency alert, and their non-emergency alerts there. The blue application, this is what would be provided to the county employees, volunteers, and so on. And if you are an administrator, you have the ability, again, to sending off alerts, sending off polls, and even Secure Chat. Law enforcement really appreciates Secure Chat. We've found that there's a lot of applications for it, but Secure Chat allows you to share not only pictures and texts, but videos, GPS coordinates, driving directions, and so on. And this is a real, it's a real-time environment, so I can have a conversation with up to 300 people in real time. So if I loop in my entire department, I send off a photograph or a video, all of those eyeballs are looking at this simultaneously, and it's going to allow us to speed up that process in terms of, maybe recovery is an example. Let me just show you a poll really quick, and we will be done with the demonstration. It looks probably a little watched out over there, but just like within the web interface that we've seen, it is a top-down process, you fill out one area and move down to the next. Now, those templates I was talking about, that speeds this up, any template you build out automatically transfers over to the mobile application. So, you know, if Daniel's out in the field, he knows exactly what he's dealing with. He knows he's got a template, he's going to go ahead and open up the templates, and maybe if I go to search and rescue here, I've got a lost hiker poll as an example. I want to load that poll right there, I'm going to tap on that, and it's going to load all of my information, all of the responses that I want to get back instantly. I can add a location in here if I so choose. Right here, we're clearly in Lakeview, maybe this was the point last seen. Has my latitude, longitude, my exact address, and so on, I can save that. And my contacts here, I might just go ahead and, I might add Jack in here, too, why not? Let's see. Got my contacts, and if I wanted to switch up what I'm sending this to, it automatically defaults to what I had sent to, mobile applications, emails, texts, and so on. If I wanted to change that up, I could do that. I'm going to leave that alone. If I wanted to add a photograph, maybe I've got a picture of the missing hiker. Maybe the Sheriff's Department just sent off a photograph that they had in their file. So I think everything else is built up pretty much the way I want it. I'm going to go ahead and hit Next. This is what it's going to look like when it lands on devices, and I'm going to go ahead and hit Send. It's going to tell me pretty quickly, this was good. So I'm receiving now my notification in my mobile app, I'm receiving it, a text message. And if I had my email in here, too, it would send it to that, or voice call, or whatever mode I send this to.
Yeah, I just got a mail sent out.
You got the email, okay, I've got you in his email. So now, if I'm just going to go ahead and respond to your mobile application, okay, I'm reading this now, and I can be there in 30 minutes. So I'm going to go ahead and tap on that, I'm going to confirm that, and I'm going to send that back to Daniel. Now, I'm going to put my Daniel hat on here, and it's maybe been a couple of minutes. I want to see who's responding to this, I want to know who can show up. And I'm going to go to my Communication Sense, I'm going to look at my lost hiker poll here, and, okay. Now I've got a dashboard, you can see who's responding, who's not, and so on. So I've got somebody who can be here in 30 minutes, I want to know who that is. I'm going to open that up, and I've got Brendan, he'll be here in 30 minutes. So again, this allows you to eliminate a lot of radio traffic. You can actually cut right to, as an example, my volunteers, if I was search and rescue. I don't have to go through dispatch and everything. Saves a lot of time, and it gets the information to the person needed fastest, so. Okay, I have definitely gone over, my apologies. But what questions do we have right now, whether it's mobile, iPaws, public alerting, and so on?
So I guess, a lot of different questions. So generally, like I said before, this is usually through your 911 dispatch, is where it resides at, because that reaches the whole county. So you're usually probably set up as a partnership with county municipalities altogether, I'm assuming.
Yeah, everybody under your county umbrella, and really, you organize it how you would like. So as a brief example, you know, even the fire department can have their own region where they manage their own people, if you would like. So maybe, and a lot of that might just be staffing, right? They don't, they can use a tool like this for non-emergency and operational use a lot, too. We encourage people to use this for everything. You know, there's a surprise birthday party for Mary this afternoon, can you show up? And that kind of stuff, just getting used to the tools, because you'll have unlimited usage. There's not really any limitation to that.
So that naturally all falls down to cost, software, software costs, or IT cost, monthly cost, yearly cost, or what are we talking?
Yeah, so that provided, you're giving a quote, okay.
We don't have any of that information as the board.
No, you're fine, absolutely. So it is an annual cost, and in terms of onboarding and training and implementation, that's all included. There are no additional fees. The cost that is put in front of you is the cost for the year. Let me pull this up really quick, I can give you, and I can share with you the documentation that I've already shared with Daniel. I can send that quote off to you, if I get email, your email, I can send that off to you here as well. But your county size, again, what was the county size?
As far as my mass or population?
Just population.
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand?
About eight, eight and two.
So I believe the most recent quote, and this would be... So for the year, includes unlimited training, you know, 24/7/365 support. Your setup, your configuration is 4,700 a year. That includes iPaws, that includes all of your internal, that includes your public alerting as well. And I can, it's just a one-sheet quote that I can forward to both of you to the board.
I think one of the kickers with AlertSense was they were the ones where our schools come on, just before they had the messenger program come on, and there was no additional cost. And you guys can play a year, Everbridge, their competitor, was 10 grand a year to do.
Well, there's a process we have to follow, and we follow the process when we go through that part.
They were all going to work with the schools and stuff and add more users than what normally could be.
So, sorry, Darwin Dodson, also a school board member. So is that something that the school could possibly drop their other system and go to?
So, is that something that the school could possibly drop their other system and go to this, and then have a savings app?
So, let me ask you what your other system is primarily used for. Is it like PTA meetings?
Yeah, well, it's alerts to the parents, like if their student is gone, or if the school closure or delay, or anything like that.
Okay. So, what we find with schools, so the answer to that is yes. However, we still, and if it's within the budgetary means, we always suggest kind of keeping those systems, but maybe taking it to a level where it might not be as cost prohibited. The reason why I say that is because they're used to those alerts, they're used to that, you know, the PTA, they almost probably start to kind of wash it out. But then, when you get to a system like this, where there's maybe a different color, a different look, a different sound coming at them, and they're gonna associate that more immediately with emergencies, it's nice to kind of keep those two separate. But, we have, you know, schools, school districts that go either way, either they'll-
Community colleges.
Community colleges, universities, schools.
So, what kind of partners do you normally see? There's a hospital, the fire departments, the EMS, the county, the town, do they partner, split cost, and become a partner on this? What do you guys normally see as you set this up?
Well, as you know in government, there's no normal. We see kind of everything, and really, what I see typically is dictated by the funding orders. So, if there is a grant, typically it just goes to the county, nobody has to pay on to or pay into it. If it's coming out of an agency budget, then at that point, it's like, well, can you, who can pitch in, who has a use for this and who can pitch in for this? But, yeah, hospitals are a big one, too, so in case of emergencies, as a matter of fact, we got word from FEMA that they are highly encouraging schools and hospitals to have access to wireless emergency alerting. You have a lot of traffic that is not necessarily known to you sometimes. Schools do a lot better job of tracking that, making sure that you're pretty much on lockdown. But in terms of a hospital, if you've got family from out of town visiting a patient, they're not registered, but if they can just draw a circle, a wireless emergency circle around the building and hit every device in that building, that's a pretty powerful use case. So, it also might be worth it to, you know, I'd be happy to have a discussion with the hospitals and see what their level of interest is to having access to that as well.
Well, what I'd look at is, it looks like a great system, it's something that'd be a very, very powerful tool, but for it to be a success, it has to look with a vision for the long run, you know? You talk to grants, grants usually like one year or whatever. You set this up, it's gonna be able to stay viable for many years, and that's where the partnership comes in financially and ownership for a system like this, just thinking down that pattern. Is there any liabilities that come with this whenever you start alerting the public? Is there any liabilities that come to the county or to the system as you're sending these things out?
From a liability standpoint, a lot of it, it kind of varies, kind of state to state in terms of how that's handled, but now, if there's a failure of some reason with the software, you do have redundancies built in place. So, as an example, this is a cloud-based system, right? So, if you have a power outage or something along those lines, you, and somehow, like your cell phone is an example, you can send off these messages with mobile devices, you still have access to that. So, you're not necessarily tied down to, you know, a CPU or anything like that. Now, for whatever reason, you cannot send this off, if you have access to a landline, you can call us, and we can send this up for you, 24/7/365. There is also that redundancy in place. Now, typically, the liability side of things, you don't, we don't deal a ton with that unless there's a failure with our system, but the liability tends to fall more on, why did you not alert the community versus, you know, something else, maybe that went wrong, or power outages, or something knocked something out, or anything like that. So, the liability, unless there is a software or technology failure, typically doesn't reside in this, typically, there's, nothing is black and white, right? There's a tower that's knocked out, or if something goes wrong somewhere, you get to the bottom of it, you know, those are such discussions we've had, but, yeah, it's really got to take a bite this, that, this basis.
And then, do you have any other Oregon counties?
Yeah, basically, pretty much all of eastern Oregon. On the eastern side, Douglas County, Lane County as well, and your neighbors to the north, we manage the state of Washington, as well as, I believe, just 19 other counties, some of the municipalities, transportation, DOT, that kind of thing as well. So, our roots run really deep in the Pacific Northwest, we've been around since 2002, so you can imagine that, and based out of Boise, as you found out. So, we are now in 107 countries, we primarily deal with government, but also are on the enterprise side, too, with Hilton and Amazon and all that kind of stuff, too. But we're, what we primarily focus on are government agencies, first responders, so.
Other questions?
Jack, do, does Northlake and Paisley have that system?
Every school district in the county has it.
Thank you very much.
So, what's our next step here? What are we at in the process?
The next step is, I guess, this is a first, that we've had the presentation as far as the Board of Commissioners, is, Daniel works on this, if he brings partners in, the presentation to us, we have followed the process. I don't know if this would fit under SoulSource, I doubt it, we'd probably have to do a RFP process, or at least get three quotes that's under a certain amount, that type of thing. But, for me, the system sounds great. Who's gonna manage it? Who's gonna have access? Does it lie with the town and dispatch, and the county has access to it? Those questions are a lot, as a board member here, to go forward is, who's gonna, where's it going to? Who's gonna have ownership? And who's gonna be the partners that go in with it? Does it fit for the ESD and the school to be a partner, the hospital to be a partner, dispatch, Northlake EMS, Paisley EMS? Do we have a lot of federal land? Do you guys cross over under the federal agencies in you at all, Forest Service, BLM?
Yes and yes.
Yeah, so, there's a lot of-
But now, there's a blanket thing.
A lot of potential partners, I think Daniel has to, I don't know what he's worked on, or what he's brought to the table as far as partnership, but that's what I see on this first presentation, is whenever we have an event in Lake County, there is, you got your county agencies, your city agencies, your federal agencies, your state, you know, how does that all come together?
And also, the answer to your questions, too, so for SoulSource, if you need a reference for this, the state of Nevada, you can claim us as SoulSource, because we are the only ones who can provide Spanish iPaws for EAS and LIA, and that is an immediate qualification for SoulSource. And in terms of, you know, working with federal, anybody who you work with can be included in, as a matter of fact, they can be given access to communicate with you as well, however you set that tree up, so to speak. And there was actually a second part of that for the SoulSource that I'm forgetting, but just keep that in mind as well, so. And they were able to get that documented, the state of Nevada, oh, partnerships with hospitals and so on. I can provide you with the county, Garfield County up in Washington, the hospital pays half of it for them. If you'd like, I can put Daniel or someone in touch with the emergency manager up there.
Daniel's obviously the key person to get that information to.
Yeah, I can get you his contact information, if you'd like, and kind of see maybe how he approached, you know, the hospital. Actually, had four different groups that were all kind of pitching in, and the county assisted as well.
And I know our hospital's always said, yes, they'll agree to help, paid for it. All the other partners are saying, no, they have no money, no way to do it, and I know Williams is also looking at eventually maybe helping pay for the county's alert system. Don't care who you have, what your year subscription will pay for, but they're not there yet. Jenny DeMire from Lincoln County is the pushing driver behind that.
Got it, okay, okay. Now, this is an OEM project, right?
Yeah.
And OEM falls on the shoulders of the Board of Commissioners, correct? So, I think it's the Board of Commissioners' decision whether we get buy-in out of outside partners or not. The county's responsible for it, so I think the county should just make the decision. And where it lays, it lays. I mean, it's gonna benefit the citizens of Lake County, so.
So, what does your general, usually have, yearly contract, a five-year contract, and do you have inflation factor into your contract cost? What are you, how are you laying out, what are your expectations?
So, note to the inflation side of things from year to year. Now, there are, you know, typically it's annual, but we have gone, you know, biannual every six months, because somehow it didn't line up with their budget cycle, and we can break it up that way. But we also do offer for multi-year discounts, three, five-year, you can still pay annually, but maybe there's a more of a discount associated with kind of a longer-term agreement. And like you mentioned yourself, too, kind of a longer-term play, because when you do invest in a system, any solution, you do want it to grow organically within the community, and you want everybody using that. And if you have kind of a one-off, again, regardless of whatever solution you have, it's hard to keep that momentum going and making sure that you get as many people involved as possible. Because at the end of the day, this is, you know, an emergency and life-saving tool. If you don't have the data, if you don't have the people involved or volunteering information, it just makes that much more difficult, so. But, yeah, we can work with you contractually on, you know, whatever works for the county
Any other questions? All right.
Sorry about that.
That's all right, that's all right. We're gonna take about a five-minute break, and then we'll come back with Lori, get you out of here, Lori, so.
No worries, very interesting.